All right. Yeah, you're good to go. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll bring this meeting to order. This is the council meeting for March 12, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
Councilmember Roach.
Here.
And Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
All right. We now have, let's see, no agenda modifications. We do have an appointment and three presentations. The first is a discussion and giving staff guidance on how we, as a council, want to fill the mayor vacancy. The city clerk prepared timelines for different options that council can decide on to appoint a mayor and place them on the dais. So you should have that for each of us. Congrats. So we'll begin with the discussion on option one, I guess, or we can discuss them all, I guess. Let's look at that. That's where Fullerton.
Yeah, so the city does not have an ordinance or should we have a vacancy for the mayor position? We have an ordinance. We have a procedure that we follow when we do not have a council member and we need to replace that seat. But since we do not have a procedure, then we fall on the state procedures. So RCW 35A dot 12 dot 050 vacancies. The office of a mayor or council member shall become vacant if a person who is elected or appointed to that position fails to qualify as provided by the law, fails to enter upon the duties of that office at the time fixed by the law without a justifiable reason or as provided in the RCW 35A dot 12 dot 060 or 42 dot 12 dot 010. A vacancy in the office of mayor or in the council shall be filled as provided in chapter 42 dot 12 RCW. An incumbent council member is eligible to be appointed to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor. So we are elected officials. We have been elected to this seat by the people. The mayor needs to be an elected position. You've, we already have a deputy mayor who was appointed by the council, who is essentially elected by the council. The duties of the of the deputy mayor is to fulfill the duties of the mayor, should the mayor become absent or is unable to perform his duties. It does not state in here that we can appoint a citizen to a mayor position. The, it says an incumbent council member, which is somebody who's elected or appointed, is eligible to be appointed to fill the vacancy of mayor. It does not say that we can open it up for anywhere. It doesn't say that we can open it up for interviews through through the citizens. We do have an ordinance or a procedure that we follow when we are wanting to appoint a council member to counsel when we have a vacancy. And that is to open it up to appoint citizens who interview and apply for the position. But we do not have a procedure for mayor. Therefore, it has to fall on RCW 31A dot 12 dot 050, which says an incumbent council member is eligible to be appointed to fill the vacancy of the office of mayor. I am a no on doing interviews and opening it up to the public. I believe that is what our council position is for. So that's, that's where I stand at that point.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Acting Mayor? Right. So is clarification on that? So from, I think, Councilmember Fullerton points out the law there. Is that limited to only council members or is that does the council have the ability to appoint? What's the limitations and the current status of the law on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. You're not limited to just sitting council members. It is typical for the office of mayor that sitting council members are, but it's not required by law. That is not a limitation. It is just letting the world know that an incumbent council member is eligible. Doesn't mean that other people are not eligible.
I have a question on that then, just in the reading of it, because it, I guess my question would be, when, when the legislature wrote, why did they include that specific thing and not that any person would be eligible?
So I would be, I am not a wizard. I do not have a crystal ball. And if anyone can figure out what the legislature is thinking at any given time, you know, come talk to me. I'd like to make you my consultant. I don't really know, but I assume, I would assume that they wanted to make sure that it wasn't limited, that it was clear that sitting council members are eligible. That has not been read to be a limitation. It's more of an inclusion. But I have heard that before. People have been concerned about that. You can go out and go beyond that.
Have other cities done that before then? No?
I'm sure that they have. In my experience, I was trying to think about all the cities I've had, and I have one that's gone through a few different mayors, typically by appointment and then election. I think they've always picked, the ones I've worked with, I've always picked a sitting council member, but they're not limited to that.
That's where Baldwin, did you say?
Oh, yeah. So I, I've been really thinking long and hard about this. I'm sure all of you have. There's, I kind of go back and forth with a couple of thoughts, and so maybe this may be helpful. It may not be. I agree in some respects with Councilmember Fullerton that the mayor position should be, you know, somebody that was basically, you know, somebody that has votes from the people. And so I understand that. I guess the same argument can be made too for the council member that's coming up also, right? If, if you then create a vacuum, then that person, you know, would, I guess, considered to need to be elected as well, but that person will end up actually being appointed. And so I think, I feel like I know already who I feel like is, is a qualified person to be able to go up into that position. And I feel like it would create a timeline that is smooth. However, I have been going back and forth in the thought process of, you know, giving the public, you know, I'm always, you know, very much about the people being able to have opportunities to be able to choose. And, you know, I, I think this, this is a potential opportunity. I still think I would choose the same. But I do wonder if it, if we're doing a disservice to the people by not opening it up. So I have been thinking about that. I don't, I don't know if somebody I feel like is qualified and knows about everything with the budget, especially us going into a budget year. I don't know that there's somebody that would know as much as the person that I feel like is the most qualified right now. But you never know. And so I'm not totally against the idea of opening it up. I think it does create transparency in government. But, but I'm leaning pretty heavily in one direction. So, but those are my thoughts.
Or Fullerton.
So the functions of deputy mayor is many elected deputy mayors are members of the local government who are given the title and serve as acting mayor in the mayor's absence. Appointed deputy mayors, which would be if the mayor appointed that deputy mayor, would serve at the pleasure of the mayor and may function as a chief operating officer. We, so council or deputy mayor Carter was appointed by the council. And then we voted and he was elected to that deputy mayor position. We gave him our faith. We gave him our trust. He has fulfilled his duties as deputy mayor. He is now acting mayor pro tem until we make a decision. And essentially, his job as deputy mayor in the absence of the mayor is to serve as the mayor. And that is what he's doing. I don't see the point in opening up. I can see no loopholes in the law. I can see no loopholes in the description of deputy mayor or an incumbent council member. I don't see where it says anywhere in the RCWs that we should open this up to public. The public already elected the seven of us to these positions. There's not one appointed position at this point. We've all been elected. So whether council member or, excuse me, deputy mayor Carter is acting as deputy mayor Carter or mayor Carter, he was elected by the people. They gave his, they gave him their faith and they put him in that elected position. Therefore, I'm unwavering on, on my decision. I don't think that this is a position that should be opened up. We don't have an ordinance. We don't have a policy. We don't have a procedure because we've never lost a mayor before. So if, if you want to open it up to the public, then that needs to be something after the fact that we can come together as a council and we can create an ordinance or a rule or a resolution on what we want to do in the future, should we ever lose another mayor. But to say after the fact, after that we've already lost our mayor and we don't have a procedure, we have an RCW that is telling us, it says, an incumbent council member is eligible to be appointed to fulfill, to fill the vacancy of the office of mayor. But I don't see anywhere where it says you should appoint a citizen who hasn't been elected by the people. So for me, I'm unwavering on this. And I just, I feel like the right thing to do would be to follow procedure, to follow the law. And deputy mayor Carter is acting mayor pro tem at this point. And I don't see any reason to make changes to the law or to the procedure that we don't have.
Councilmember McLehman's.
Yeah, so this is quite a pickle for us. So just to be fully transparent to council and to the public, I want to see Terry be mayor, right? Just to be candid. Because I believe that he's qualified. He's doing the job. And he, he can do the job well, and it would serve the citizens best at this point. I mean, for me, that's, that's my point of view. We could open it up. That would be fine. I think there are only two people. There's only one person close to Terry, right? And that would be Justin, right? We need an executive in the city, right? We have two years and then we'll have an election, but we need an executive right now who can get stuff done. And I really believe that Terry can do that. I also believe though that Justin could do an excellent job at that. But as of now, right now, my concern is also that we have a council member sitting at the council retreat. Right? If we appoint Terry tonight, then we can have a council member seated at the Saturday retreat and then they can come in and that would be an opportunity for them to get to know the council, to get to know the staff, to understand what we're doing and not come in and, and have, I know I would feel like I just missed it by a week, right? So to be transparent to everybody and because I think I understand what the rules are, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Terry Carter for mayor.
A second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion.
I.
Sorry, Councilmember Roach. Sir. I'm sorry, what?
Aren't we discussing it still?
So was that a motion to nominate? Or do we need to open it up for anybody who wants to nominate themselves?
Let's let the city clerk tell us what we need to do.
If you're done with discussion, then you need to open it up for nomin, you need to open it up for nominations and then do a motion. And then a second and then a vote.
Okay, so we should hang, do we need to remove the, the motion? It becomes a whole issue, right?
Where does it say we need to do on nominations?
So what, a motion that would be in order right now, if you are done with the discussion of going out, it would be to select from sitting council members. But the process under your adopted rules of Sturgis or Roberts rules is for when doing an appointment, you take nominations. So you open the floor for nominations. Anyone can nominate. If you're limiting it to the council, another council member, you can nominate yourself. When all the nominations do not require a second, when there's no more people raising their hand to give nominations, then the chair calls, asks three times, any more nominations? Any more nominations? Any more nominations? If there is none, then the nomination period is closed. At that point, the first person nominated is voted first. If that person gets four votes, the voting is over and that person is elected. If that person does not get four votes, you go to the next nomination and the voting continues until someone gets four votes. So that is the way it works for nominations. You can't just make a motion to nominate. You just have to, you have to open it to nominations.
So we're still discussing?
Yeah, so we're still discussing.
Or he could have a motion to move to nominations from among the council members, whatever you guys want to decide. This really is the council's decision. You can keep it in, you can go out, but the nomination process is as I laid out.
Okay, so.
We have a few more questions.
Yeah, I think we have some more discussion then. So Councilmember Roach, please.
Yeah, I was gonna reiterate my comments from last week where I advocated for putting it out there. So we have a city of 25,000 people. Whether or not some of those candidates come forward or not, I think is beside the point. It's really about open government. It's an opportunity for us as a council to be able to show that we actually want to listen to them. So by taking a vote today, whether it's for Terry or anybody else, I think is, is a huge missed opportunity. And it will just, you know, take a few steps back as a council and trust for the citizens. So I feel very strongly about it that it should be open to all and we should give a few weeks to be able to have people come in, advertise for it, just like we have for any other job and see who comes forward.
Councilmember Hubler, did you have something? I thought I saw your hand up earlier.
I do. Transparency issues. I have been sent a whole lot of stuff in the past week and I've gotten a lot of phone calls and messages from citizens that are concerned about deputy mayor Carter being our mayor. I have read through some of this stuff and I'm, I'm honestly, I'm shocked. I'm, I'm, to be transparent, I was a child that was molested at three years old by a man. And the things that I have read in the records are not okay with me. The things that I've read that happened in the city of Bonnie Lake, the things that I've read and the things that have happened in the city of Pacific. I'm not okay with those. I'm not okay with deputy mayor Carter being our mayor in these kind of situations where he hasn't been able to uphold the law. He's been on a Pierce County's prosecuting attorney's Brady's list. How do we put someone in a mayor's position that hasn't been able to be trusted by our own police department, another police department and our prosecuting attorney's office? It's, it's, it's not a one-time thing. I could see, you know, one time having an issue and moving past that, but we've had a lot of police issues over the years that people just turn blindly towards and forget that those exist. And that's when things start happening and they just, power comes into play and I'm, I'm 100% not okay with this. I don't believe that that should be an option at all, no matter what. No matter if it gets opened up to someone else or if I get appointed, I don't 100% agree with deputy mayor Carter being our next mayor.
Councilmember Baldwin.
It sounds like the, the mayor's term ends, what, in two years? Like it's, it's two years from now, then there's going to be an election. I have more to say after.
Yeah, it would, if, anyone who's appointed would until the next municipal election, which is November of 2025, when that is certified, the person elected would be sworn in to finish this term, which would be a month. And then they would also then be sworn in for the next four-year term. So they would serve until 2029.
Okay, so less than two years at this.
So this one is, yeah, it's, it's what, 17? A year, seven months.
I guess what I will encourage the council with is we need to consider like whoever is going to be in the position, they need to be able to be re-elected, you know? That's, I think that's something to be considered. If they have that ability to, to do that so that we don't, you know, have kind of just a fallout of mayors and things like that. But I think the other thing is, people are very emotional right now. And there's nothing worse than making a rushed decision when people are emotional. I don't want to rush through this decision. It's a big decision for the people. And I think like when we were just trying to, I don't know what we just did just now, but like we need to be able to have the discussion. We need to be able to think clearly and logically about what is going on. Nothing is worse than making a rash decision that's rushed. That's just a, that's always a stupid decision. And so again, I, I feel the same as Councilmember McLehman's in my feelings about who should be in that seat. But at the same time, I feel very strongly that we should open it up to the people. I agree with Councilmember Roach that it does show transparency of government. Again, I don't know that my, my mind will be changed at all. But it does show the people. I mean, that's, that's what we're saying. I, I looked at the law and I read through it. And it does say eligible to be appointed and it's what Robertson had, sorry, I was about to call you Jennifer. It's what Robertson had said is, is that it's just who's eligible. It doesn't say that, that we can't do that. And we are the council, you know, elected by the people. And so we can make decisions that are different. And so with that being said, I just, I really caution us not to make rushed, rash, emotional decisions. Those are not smart ones.
That's where Fullerton.
Yeah, so 2021 was an election year for several of us. And there was a beautiful article that came out that smeared council member or deputy mayor Carter. And I know there were some people that were trying to be elected at that time that were involved in that article. And I believe that deputy mayor Carter was elected by the people. There was full transparency. All of the voters got to read all of the beautiful articles, all of the amazing smear campaigns. And they still made a choice, and I believe it was around 58% or 60% that council member, at the time, council member Carter, which is now deputy mayor Carter, was elected by the people. And I keep hearing transparency, transparency, but this to me is not about, you know, hey, we're going to open this up to everybody. We're gonna, you know, we're not letting the people decide. If we open it up for interviews, we're still making that decision. We're still gonna, we're still gonna pick and appoint somebody to be mayor. So there's nothing about this, this isn't transparency. This is what the people have chosen. The people elected us. We have seven elected officials sitting here. This isn't an emotional decision. I'm going strictly by the laws. I'm looking at the laws. I'm looking at our ordinances, our Bonnie Lake municipal code. You know, has anybody reached out to staff? I know that the staff has already been working with mayor pro tem Carter at this point. And he's not going to be making any decisions based off of his past. This is, basically, he has a vision for the city. He has a vision for the people. And you know, God knows, you know, the Lord has used many broken people. We got Moses who stuttered. We have David, who was a murderer and a pornographer, you know? The Lord uses many people. He uses imperfect people. Not one of us is perfect. Everybody has a past. Everybody has something that they've done that they wish they hadn't done. And, you know, I can't judge people on whether they answered a call or not. But I'm just saying, looking at the law, this is, this is not an emotional decision for me. We have, we essentially, as a council, we elected deputy mayor Carter to be the mayor, should the mayor not be able to fulfill his duties. We no longer have a mayor because our mayor was not able to fulfill his duties. Every single one of us was elected by the people. Past known. Everything known. And still 60% election.
So I'm just gonna. You're done, sorry.
I'm done, yeah.
I will just make a quick comment. I'm not gonna try and defend myself necessarily. I don't, it is what it is. I will just say that I have tried to stand up at the right time to people and organizations that I felt were not doing things right. I've made mistakes. But my issues with Bonnie Lake had to do with me calling out somebody. And then it became IA after IA after IA. I decided to leave. I went to the city of Pacific and was promoted to detective. And I handled CPS calls. There was no training. I'm sure maybe somebody's gone, gone into a job where there's no training. And I notified CPS on some of those calls at the end of the call rather than at the beginning, when there was no danger to the victim. That was my mistake. But I can see that there's been a smear campaign and I really wish that if you have questions or if you want to know what happened, you would please reach out to me and at least get my side. You don't have to believe me, but please get my side. That's all I would ask. For better or worse, this is the reason, we talk about transparency in government. This is the reason people don't get involved in government. Councilmember McLehman's.
Yeah, so I, I kind of agree with the haste. I do think, I don't think putting this position out makes the government less, more or less open. I think our debate and what we do and how we relate with each other here and listening to the city, I think that does. I do have an urgency to have a mayor sitting at our retreat. You know, we can postpone a retreat until we have both a mayor and a council. Otherwise, we're faced with, unless we, I'd be okay with putting the mayor up for open if we wanted to change the timeline so that we could appoint a mayor Friday and then put out, put out a call for a new city council member if appropriate Friday as well. And then we can seat a council member Saturday morning at the retreat. But I think going into a retreat without a full council and without a mayor, I think that's, I want to understand the value of that, right? Because you're just gonna bring somebody in. It's a big job. It's a lot to learn. Unless it's a previous, somebody who served previously, there's, there's a lot to learn. This is an excellent opportunity to do that. Right? So, you know, I don't want to keep the debate away from the people, but I do want to give the people the, for me, it's about giving the people the best. for me, it's about giving the people the best condition, the best condition would be on the 23rd, that morning, we have a full council and a mayor listening to staff present what they think the priorities are and what we should spend money on for the next two years. Okay, so that's my urgency. Um, I really, you know, the thing is, is unless somebody is out in our community that I don't know, I would have a hard time believing somebody's gonna come in here that has been endorsed by the people through an election, that has been committed to the city and has been running and is familiar with the current state of the city. There's one person in the city that, that matches that, right? Um, that could apply, as far as I know, maybe two, right? Right, so besides deputy, besides Deputy Mayor Carter. Well, there's, there's a few people here that I would endorse as well, but right now, right now, it's like, to me, I'm like, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure, you know, if you want to convince me it's somebody other than Deputy Mayor Carter, I would have to believe that they're electable.
Yeah.
I know he's electable, because I saw his campaign and I saw that. Um, they would need to be electable, they need to be familiar with the, with the current state of the city. And they would need to understand how to work with the city. So when you get over that, that's, that's like an enormous, uh, barrier to get past, right? For qualifications. Um, there are three people that I can think of, uh, that, that haven't already said no, right? So unless one of you, besides Deputy Mayor Carter, right? You know, then I think it's pretty easy for, for me to figure out how to get there. So, um, do we want to, the question is, do we want to try to, uh, what I'd ask the council is, do we want to accelerate the selection process? Have a special meeting Friday, select our mayor Friday, is that acceptable? That's what I would propose. Because if we did that, then we could appoint a council member Saturday morning, right? I mean, are we gonna get a different answer if it takes a week versus five days, three days?
Friday, are you talking about?
This Friday.
Why wouldn't we just nominate tonight? Or are you talking like you want to open it up?
Because there are council members who are rightly concerned about, one, rushing, and, two, not asking and letting people apply, right? So we could let people apply. We could get their resumes, and then we could review them Friday at a special meeting and make the selection. Right, this is not rocket science.
As the Astro, what are you?
Yeah, what are you?
That's what I do at work.
Uh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, I know, I, I think the end result would probably be, um, who we think it is, we keep talking about. Um, but I love the open, uh, government scenario, and I've always been that way. You know, you've seen me vote over and over and over against very qualified, excellent employees over and over. Um, I actually, of course, one of our city administrators that y'all don't know, the previous city administrator, you know, we voted against, a couple of us voted against that individual back then, and was a fantastic city administrator. So I was just part of the process of, uh, as, uh, you know, councils pointed out, that if we, you know, make sure we don't rush. Um, I think that's a very excellent point, because, uh, you know, we want to, in my mind, have as open a government as possible. Make sure we know what's on the table out there. Um, I, I agree with Councilmember McLehman's that we've had repeated people that we've talked about that keep saying no, so, uh, but I don't know what I don't know, right, ultimately? Um, and I think, you know, Mr. Carter might even agree that, you know, uh, hopefully that it's, uh, it's a good idea to make sure that we know what we know, because I think we're all here doing the same thing, is to try to choose the best person for the job. Um, clearly, we kind of know what that is today, probably. Um, but I want to make sure that there isn't some weird thing that, you know, it's like, oh, well, geez, you had X, and it was like, wow, really? You didn't even think about that, you know? There are some, maybe some retired military folks or something like that, or anything that's out there that I don't have a clue about. I have no clue whatsoever. I don't have anybody that, um, that has not said no. You know, so, and we're all qualified, I'd love to see any one of these council members be the next mayor, would be great. You know, Deputy Mayor's obviously, you know, right in line there. No, seriously, yeah, yeah, Councilmember Baldwin would make an excellent mayor, in my mind, right? You know, I'm sure she doesn't want to do it. They're all, they're all well-qualified, Councilmember Hubler, uh, Councilmember Roach, of course, is the supreme qualified individual sitting here, in my mind. I can't seem to twist his arm enough to get him to do it. Um, but, you know, taking that little bit of time, I think that's our, what I've been trying to do. So I think we'll end up there, but I think open government, so that's long of, you know, taking a little bit of time. You're still the mayor, you are the mayor, you, people keep calling you deputy or whatever or something like that, but you are the mayor right now. You know, Councilmember Carter is the mayor. All the powers and, you know, it's, it's, it's just gonna take a little.
Sure, Councilmember Baldwin.
Um, I know with some of these concerns and these smear things and all that, you know, people can say all kinds of stuff about you. Um, I know as a police officer, not me, but you know, like, people that are police officers, um, they really do, a lot of things are said about them, reported about them, um, you know, e- even if they're an upstanding individual, like, they're literally dealing with, you know, um, some of the most difficult people in the public. And so, um, I have asked myself, you know, these kinds of questions, um, to Deputy Mayor Carter. And as far as I'm concerned, um, every interaction I've had with him is, is constantly full of integrity and grace. And I, um, know that, um, as far as I am concerned in my interactions with him, um, I, I've just found him to be very much, very, um, just an honest individual. And so, um, he's never been anything but that, um, since, um, I've met him and known him. Um, and so with that being said, I, I definitely echo what, uh, Councilmember McLehman said. I, I just don't see somebody else, you know, I guess, coming from the outside. And I'm very skeptical if we do open it up, just so you guys know. And if somewhere, someone were to come along and, and actually be qualified, um, to do the job the way that I feel like he can. And so, um, so those are my two to three cents.
Councilmember Roach.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, with opening it up, one thing I hope is that whoever it is, and maybe, maybe nobody does, and we know Terry's interested, and Carrie mentioned she's interested, but at least that gives us an opportunity to, to talk to him. So I haven't talked to you personally, and yet here we are, almost ready to vote, and I'm like, wait a second, every time, and I've done this many times on the council, Pierce County Council, and every time the candidate goes to that mic right there, and all of us get to ask questions. We get to know your vision for the city, and we get to know concerns that might be, and we, we have that interaction. But to just rubber stamp her right now without an opportunity to talk, or you share your vision or anything, is, is very misguided. Um, so I'm all about, whether it's on a Friday or two weeks or whatever it is, open it up, give it an opportunity. We know who the candidates are, we can talk, figure out where we are, ask the questions in a public forum, so everyone can, uh, be a part of the council, but also the public as well, and then have a vote. That, that's, um, very standard in a lot of other different governments.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so we found out last week at the workshop that the mayor was going to be stepping down the next day. So we've literally had a week. I would like to know who actually, and, and last week, we were told by Mayor Protem Carter that he was interested in becoming mayor. And so we've had a week to have a discussion, to, to ask the questions, to reach out to, um, Mayor Carter, and also to, um, make phone calls and, um, call another council member, call me. I, I made no ifs, ands, or buts about the fact that I was, um, going to be nominating, uh, at the time Deputy Mayor Carter. So if somebody was interested in being mayor, they could have reached out this week, you've had seven days. I haven't heard from anybody, I haven't gotten any phone calls, my phone's been on, I've been off since, you know, last week I was off. I haven't received any phone calls from anybody trying to convince me to change my mind, trying to let me know that they were interested. Um, I haven't received any phone calls from citizens that wanted to apply for the position. I haven't heard from, I, my phone is on, not on silent, it's on full ring. So if you wanted to ask questions, everybody on the council knew that um, Mayor Carter, um, was wanting to continue the position, so why didn't anybody reach out at that time? And, you know, so in full transparency, then reach out and ask the questions um, that you have, and find out what the real stories are, and find out, um, what actually happened, rather than assuming um, from liberal articles. But I'm still I'm still on the RCWs and you know, if you want, if you want to open it up and, and have a, I'm, I'm off on Friday, I'm more than happy to come back and have a meeting on Friday and let everybody who's present can apply for the position, if that's what council wants to do. But I don't think that has anything to do with transparency, I think the people have already spoken. They've already elected all of us, it's done. I mean, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Carter has been in position for almost three years now. So, and it was never an issue until tonight. And he was nominated and elected by the council in January to be Deputy Mayor at the time, knowing full well what those responsibilities were when we nominated and then elected him to that position. It wasn't a question at that time, there was nothing brought up at that time, and now all of a sudden, that we don't have a mayor, um, we're gonna start bringing up other stuff. So anyway, I'm good.
Councilmember Roach and then Councilmember Hubler.
Yeah, so Tuesday, when we first found out about it, I think we left the meeting, at least I was under the impression we left the meeting, that we were coming back tonight with this on the agenda to discuss process and what we were gonna do. And there were three options given here. We got to the very first bullet point on option one, and a nomination was already made. I mean, this is not looking good to the public, who has seen it being, uh, just jammed here. I mean, this is not, this is not open government. It's not, we didn't even get to option two or option three, and we're trying to nominate somebody.
Been elected.
I came here to talk about a process of how the appointment was going to be done, and I don't understand what the huge rush is here.
Councilmember Hubler.
I'm, I'm in agreement, um, with Councilmember Roach on that point. Um, rushing into something that is this major, no matter if the person is elected or not elected. Um, I personally, I don't know how many of you knew before last week the Bonnie Lake, uh, public records, or all of the Pacific public records, but I didn't know these. Didn't know this until actually Wednesday and Thursday of last week. So if I didn't know this, how do we know that the rest of our Bonnie Lake voting community members actually knew all of these details that have been sent out? And these are not some liberal newspaper spewing misinformation, these are actual public records requests of written reprimands and, uh, times that, um, it's been suspended. Um, these are things where he's admitted in these, uh, conversations and these reprimands to what has gone on. These are not, uh, hearsay. I didn't know these existed until last week. Um, I am bothered by a lot of this. How do I know, as a sitting council member elected by the community, that our police department, that still currently has police officers in it, that were working here during that time, are gonna want to work with Deputy Mayor Carter as a mayor? How do we know that? Have we spoken to our police officers that had that experience with him? Have we spoken to the police officer that, um, had a threat against him and that was not taken seriously? Have we, had we had those conversations? That's why rushing into this is not an acceptable process, like, being just like, let's go? Heck no. I'm, if I'm sitting here in just absolute mortification that this is things that I'm reading, I'm, yes, they've been technically deleted from his file, but that does not mean they're not out there. Everything's been sent, and I'm just I'm flabbergasted that this is, um, this has even happened, um, and that this, this is just not even okay. And, um, and Deputy Mayor Carter can say that, you know, yes, things aren't up in the, whatever, but everything's in black and white, admitted too. And, uh, like I said already, as a child, in cases that were left untouched, um, whether you have a full file or not, it's just not acceptable as, as a, in this position. And that's why I sit there, and I'm like, if I'm seeing this and this is coming from community members to tell me this, because they're telling me, do not elect him as our next mayor. So that doesn't mean our community is behind him now. That means we need to do our due diligence, and we need to protect our citizens, not just go, well, we like him, we're gonna, we're gonna take him, let, let's just make him our next mayor. That is not acceptable as citizens and city council. We are elected to protect the people, not just protect a person because that person is, been on the city council for three years or whatever it is. We, and, and had I known all of this detail when our very first meeting, when we were told that we had to elect a deputy mayor, I had no idea the past. I had no idea what was going on back there. If I would have known that, I would have 100% said, no way. I don't believe that is the right person for our deputy mayor. Maybe it's Angela, maybe it's Kelly McLehman's. Whether it is or not, it is, we, as a city council, need to do this correctly, and we need to make sure that we are representing our city. For me right now, if I voted yes, that would absolutely not be okay. It would be a disservice to our citizens that elected us to be honest and fair at all times to our city. And, and this is not being transparent. If, if Deputy Mayor Carter had come forward and said, hey, guys, I want you to know my past, and not hidden it, and been like, oh, oh, I have an excuse for it, that's what I've heard. But this isn't, this isn't just a push it under the rug, let it go. These are things that seriously people are bringing forward, saying, hey, I'm concerned about this, like, here it is. It's not one time, it's multiple times. And again, do we know if our Bonnie Lake Police Department want to work with him personally, one-on-one? Do our cops that are sitting on the force want that to happen?
Uh, I will just say that, uh, I was working with them yesterday, uh, teaching emergency vehicle operations. Uh, officers, the one reason I got in to running for council is because officers asked me to run. Because some of the baloney that was happening at the PD at that time. So when I got in here, it was for them. And I got in here and I realized, I need to do something good for the city, I can't just be here and be mad. What happened to me? Um, I've been very public about it. I don't come out every time and every person I meet, hey, this happened to me, right? It's kind of weird, it's kind of awkward, um, but I've been very public about it. The article that came out, um, I think the, the person that you, a person, uh, another person who I was running against, uh, brought that article out, uh, which listed all. Uh, which listed all that stuff and whatnot. Um, I talked to that reporter. You know, a lot of people, oh, don't talk to the press or whatever. I talked to her and I said, hey, here's the deal. Sat down, explained each thing. So I'm happy to do that with anybody who would like to talk about it. But I know it's not going to matter to you right now, and that's okay. But I would just encourage you to, again, listen to more sides than one, because right now you're getting one side. Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, okay, so I have to respond to a few things. Um, so. What's the rush? The rush is. We're going to sit down and develop one, a culture on the 23rd. We're going to learn about each other. We're going to learn about staff. We're going to learn about the city. That, in my experience of legislating and governing, that's key. That's a big deal and I just don't want somebody to miss out on that. Um, I didn't put us in this position. The mayor put us in this position. I just want to have a full functioning government for the retreat. So postpone the retreat. Or outline a way we get a full functioning government for retreat. That is my haste. The other haste I have is unless you can tell me. We're going to get a different answer than Deputy Mayor Terry Carter. We've just wasted fifty-two minutes. Uh, on this topic. And if Terry actually, Deputy Mayor Carter actually winds up as the mayor. Uh. I reserve the right to neener, neener, neener you guys. Cause. Right? Cause that's it. I mean, to me, it's like, obvi-, you know, here's the problem, right? It's black and white. To me, it's pretty obvious what's going to happen. We have a lot of business to do. We got a lot of stuff to do. Right? And, and if we're going to come up with a different answer by opening it up, great, let's do it. Let's do it in an expeditious fashion. Let's set a timetable. Let's get people in here Friday evening. Let's interview them and let's pick a good one. I think most people that care about the city and are involved. I think we can get good candidates and I think we can do that. And I think, yes, that would serve the city well. Right? I'd be curious to know if we get a different answer. That's interesting. Um, so that deals with why I'm in a hur- hurry, right? I don't want to rush it, but I think we need to act with haste. Right? We don't need to be careless, but we should act with haste because we have an opportunity. Right? Look at the timeline. Say, how do we get a mayor and a city council member? If we appoint a city council member as mayor seated by the 23rd. I can tell you how to do that today. Right? If we move with haste. Not careless. Right? Not rushed, but with haste. So I'm willing to listen. I, we just need to do it. So dealt with that. Second thing is, um. You know, I don't, uh, I, I am not supporting, uh, Councilmember Carter because he's my friend. I didn't know Councilmember Carter before I got seated. I've come to know him, uh, as, as a deputy mayor, he's worked very well. He's done a lot of things. The MRAC effort that we're currently maybe on the verge of taking advantage of a city, I didn't bring it. Who else brought it? Deputy Mayor Carter went out and made that work. When I was looking for good candidates to run for the city council, I, I spent three months. They, trying to find people and lo and behold, two people come forward. I talked to the, those two people. And you know what? It's like. It's, it's good people that bring good people forward, right? So when I look at how that goes, that's the evidence I have. So I look at the works, right? That have come forward and I go, I see, I see good stuff for the city from Deputy Mayor Carter and that's why I support him. Not because he's my friend. Right? I have lots of friends. Right? But not every friend can be a good executive. The other thing is I've worked for some really rotten executives. Right? You have to have people skills. You have to be, have the ability to make hard decisions. You have to understand what a budget is and you have to care. I believe, uh, Deputy Mayor Carter embodies all of those. That's why I support Deputy Mayor Carter. So one, I don't want to rush. Right? But I do want a fully, full government, a functioning government at the retreat. So either postpone a retreat. Or let's move with haste.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Uh, I support everything, uh, that Councilmember McLeimans said. Um, and so I guess my, my next question then becomes, uh, you know, and I agree with you that. I wouldn't want to push forward, especially when two council members feeling very strongly and, and probably need to have conversations and to, to think a little bit more. Um, but also agree that there needs to be some haste because of some of the decisions that we have coming up. Um, and so, uh, I, I don't see why we can't change the retreat date if, if we need to. Um, and I do like the, the Friday option as well. So I don't, I don't know if, if you guys can speak to that or whatever. I, I, I like the Friday option.
So it's possible, although difficult, right? And so, uh, did, City Clerk, did you have something to say?
Uh, with the, with the date, we're trying to get. Like twenty-five people to all have a date. It was extremely hard to even.
I understand that, but there's, there's literally our mayor just left. Like that changed everything. That, that wasn't in the ballpark at the time of the decision. I agree with you. That, that it, it requires a lot of movement, but at the same time, like our mayor just left. Surprise. He's gone. So, you know, I, I think that changes things a bit and, and maybe things need to be considered a little bit differently. I don't know. That's just my thought.
And, and we do have money down just to let you know on caterers and it's too late to get that money back.
We can't move it?
Well, you could do.
We've moved it already and they allowed it once for me to move it.
Sounds like deputy, or sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Swamblin. Um, uh, I think Mr. McLeimans, a council member, had a, um, you know, the haste idea is good, right? Is there, is there a timeline that worked out so that we could make this all happen and reasonable while still entertaining some? Public options at the same time? Is that what I was hearing?
Special counsel.
Yeah, either Friday, either Friday or Monday. I mean, we should talk about, in the essence, in the interest of being open, we should talk about it and see what would work. If, if we're reluctant to move the date, are there, is there a way to seat a mayor on Friday or Monday? At the latest, right? Well, and then turn around and seat a council member Saturday morning. That would be my proposal. Once we're done with discussion.
Oh, you could certainly schedule a special meeting. And I'm not sure if you're talking about Friday the fifteenth or Friday the twenty-second. Fifteenth. So you could certainly have a special meeting. I mean, assuming I'm talking for the clerk, that she could put, put, put stuff on social media channels that were taking, we have, you know. Forty-eight hours or something. You can apply by noon on Friday. You could have a special meeting on the fifteenth. Um, you, you couldn't seat a council member the next day because. We don't know if you're going to have a council vacancy.
Right.
So you, you would have to wait until there's a council vacancy. And then, um, so if you had a special meeting on the fifteenth. You select a mayor and that mayor happens to be a council member. You, you know, you do have a process in your, um. Council rules where you advertise. I don't think that it has a, uh. Certain amount of time that you have to advertise, but say you made an, made a decision on Friday, put a new mayor in that, and that created a council vacancy. Um, you could certainly start putting it out on social media, advertise on Monday. I guess have another special council meeting. I mean, unless you only give one day of application and interview on the twen-, on the nineteenth, otherwise. Um, you could potentially have, have that decision be the first order of business at the retreat, but if you're interviewing. That would take up a lot of time at the retreat.
Sure.
So, um, that would be about the only way.
Conservation of complexity, no matter when we do it, it's gonna take time.
The other thing you could do is if you are advertising for a new council member. You could invite applicants to come and watch the retreat. But if they're, if you don't have someone seated by then, I, I think it would be very challenging. To have a special council meeting on the fifteenth and again on the twenty-second and the retreat on the twenty-third. Think that would be, I'm not saying it's impossible. That's really, got to look to, to Sadie and the rest of the staff. It would be a challenge. You could certainly get a mayor seated by then, especially if, even if you do an open.
Yeah, the mayor, the, the mayor can be seated before. I, I believe that. It's just that I, I'm also worried about losing a council member. Thank you for that. Um, and again, I'm. I don't want to create work for the staff. That's not my intention. I'm just trying to get it to be effective.
The mayor created the work for the staff. I'm leaving.
Uh, Councilmember Fuller.
And just, um. Be transparent. The whole entire council, to the best of my knowledge, except maybe two. Mayor Carter has always been transparent on what happened. Uh, I was running at the same time, uh, for council. As. Mayor Carter at the time. And so I was aware of all of the articles. I read the articles. I read the, um, reports. And. It was out there because it was part of the campaign against. Mayor Carter. And so. If, if you didn't read it. I know most people saw it. Everybody on council saw it. Um. Mayor Carter. Gave us his side of the story. He told us what happened. He's always been transparent. And he's been, how, how many years have you been on council now? You're going on ten years or some six years, so. Um, all of the police officers have worked with. Councilmember Carter, Deputy Mayor Carter and Pro Tem Mayor Carter. So, or Mayor Pro Tem Carter, so. Um, it, it's already been out there. They've already been working with him, so. It, it's been out there. It's been open. It's been public.
Any further discussion right now? Where we move to, I guess. It sounds like if I'm reading this right, um, we, we have an option. We have a couple of options, right? So. There's option one, two, and three that's on our page here. And then there's a, probably a fourth option presented by Councilmember McLeimans. So I guess what we can do is just go through each one and which one do we want to do? Um, so I guess I'll, can I call for a vote on option one? Okay.
How timelines work depending on kind of like how you want, but the dates and stuff can change. Depending on how long you guys want to advertise and things like that.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Please, Councilmember Baldwin.
Before we go through these options though, I, I feel like as a council, we need to decide whether we, we need to change the retreat date. Because this would push things out if we're wanting things to be at the retreat. That's what it sounds like is we want there to be. Right? That we want there to be the right people at the retreat, making very difficult decisions for the city. Um, and so wouldn't that then mean we would have to change the retreat date? Like if we don't choose. One of these options.
I think even with some of these options, new council member takes oath on, for this option two, April second. So, yeah, there's.
Yeah. And so I'm just wondering, like, it looks like the, the latest date that I'm seeing here on this timeline. By the way, whoever, did, did you do this timeline? Thank you. Um, that, you know, if there's a way that we can do it. Past April ninth. And I wonder, I mean, has the caterer seen the news? Right? Like we lost our mayor. I just, I feel like it would be nice if. It, it would be nice, I guess.
Think the cost of lunch.
That on the news.
With a multi-million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Hubler.
I, I think moving the retreat as much as it sucks. Um, is our best bet because I need to be able to have some more discussions. I need to be able to. Make my decisions as well and I don't want to be rushed into a Friday. And on top of it, Friday, I'm my Girl Scout troop. We're going to main stage theater to go to support our local actors and actresses. Um. So, and then Monday is my son's seventeenth birthday. So two dates that we're being told like, hey. Suck it up, take it for the team. I mean, but these are things that are really important in my life too, so. Um. I, just being able to take that time, whether we. Open up. If we take a current council member for mayor or we, uh, open it up for both. Um, either way, it's, we need to be able to take that time to have those more in-depth discussions and. Talk even more or, uh, allow us to have those conversations privately with others. Um. I just think, and I mean, we've got a. A week and a half before council retreat. Does it? Up to move it? Yep. Will we probably lose a little bit of money? Yes. Um, but is it better for us to take that time? And, and especially if, if Councilmember McLeimans is correct, it, I mean. To have a, and a mayor and all seven council members there is the better choice. Uh, we, we need to make sure that, like. This is my first one. I mean, for me, there's going to be a lot of learning. Um, just in the past two and a half months, there's been a ton of learning. So having a new council member come in after that. Could be a lot harder for that person or a mayor, whoever it is coming in. We need to make sure that we're a little more prepared for that.
I guess. How do we move the spoils? What's the, what are the options here?
There needs to be an option.
Yeah, what's that?
Needs to be an option.
Option four. Yeah, that's kind of what we're.
So really, the council can do a few different things. Um, you could have a motion to postpone the retreat and ask the staff to go back out and survey folks for a new date. Uh, I didn't know if there's a urgency in terms of the budget and when the retreat needs to happen. No, okay. So, um, then you could also. That or and either one, you could take an option one, two, three, or four, a new option. The options, the motions, I think, if, for option one would be, if you were going to appoint tonight, would be to, um. Move to, um, take nominations on the mayor tonight, limited to, limited or not to sitting council members. Um, the, the other would be to, uh, make a motion to, um, appoint the council member and then go out. Um, for a new council member, that would be option two. Option three would be, um, to advertise for the vacancy of mayor. And to give, this is also option four, um, uh, advertise for the vacancy of mayor. Setting the date when the applications would be due. So option four would be the same thing, but setting them to be due by noon on Friday. If you wanted to have a Friday afternoon or evening, um, council, special council meeting. Um, and that's, that's the four options there. So you can have. Um, postponement of the retreat can be, you might want to vote on the options first because if you're going to get this done in time, you might. That might influence people voting on to postpone the retreat, but that's really, this is the council's decision. So I, I don't know if that was very clear.
We're kind of all over the place, I guess.
So this is, you're setting the process on selection of the mayor by a motion. If you think the council has. Come together any one particular way, I'm happy to, to, um, create a motion for you, um. But I'm not really sure where the council is, frankly. So, you know, it would be, we, you know, I, I moved to, uh, to, uh. If it's to go out, advertise for a vacancy of mayor. Uh, with the application deadline being whatever that date is, um, and the, um. Interviews and consideration of the appointment to be on a different date. I mean, that could be the motion. So.
My motion to nominate from within the council.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, discussion. Seems like we've discussed a lot, but.
Need to open it up. We need to take our time.
Councilmember Roach? Yeah, I was clear from, uh, last week and I haven't changed, but definitely it should be an open process and so I'll be voting no.
Okay. All right.
Call the question.
No, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Call the question.
Call question?
I think we've debated it enough. I think we should.
All right, all those in favor? All right, all those in favor of choosing a council member, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's do those against.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. We have another motion.
I moved a root, um, let's see, postpone the retreat to a future date.
Second.
Discussion. Want to, need the date or we good for Friday? Sorry.
We don't, we would have to guidance.
Yes. So Councilmember Fullerton and Councilmember Carter said yes. Everybody else said no.
To nominate from within council.
Correct.
I believe Councilmember McLeimans said yes to, didn't you?
No, I said no.
All right, so the next motion is to postpone the retreat.
The next available best date.
Okay.
It's be determined by staff. Right? Well, we don't know. How are we gonna, yeah.
Oh.
Uh, has anybody seconded this motion? I don't think so.
I did.
You did? Okay, Councilmember McLeimans, thank you. All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
About that? Okay.
So then if uh it sounds like the council wants to go out uh to advertise for the vacancy of mayor. Um, so a motion would be in order of when you want that vacancy to close and when you would want to take up the interview process.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Um, I, I think uh now that we postponed the retreat, I think it would. You know, if there's not, if we're not gonna be uh. Working to a timeline, I think I would prefer for the um. Interviews. To be uh at a council meeting and not a workshop.
Interviews in two weeks.
Hmm.
So what is that?
That's what I was looking at when the sixth.
Interviews for the twenty-sixth. Um, oh, sorry, Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm so sorry. Um, I am curious if it is possible to postpone interviews passed um after April seventh.
For for mayor.
We we have ninety days, so.
Okay, yeah, because I'm going to be in South Africa until April seventh on missions. If you don't want me there for the decision, I understand. I don't know that I can.
Your name is gonna be.
Video in.
You'll come back mayor.
I'll be in a township somewhere.
If if you're not here, you may become mayor.
I know.
So that would be what, uh, the ninth? And this, that, correct?
Yeah.
All right, um, that, I'm lost on where we are in our second.
That would be, so let me, let me recap. So I think um, uh, so option. The, I I believe the way the option would work is that we would uh. Uh advertise the opening and we'd have interviews on the ninth of April and then we could advert, if a council member was chosen, then we could. Um, have uh the the interviews on the twenty-third of April. So we could have a full government again on the twenty-third of April.
For council members on the twenty-third, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if if we select the mayor from the council on the ninth, then we could select a councilman, the the replacement by the twenty-third.
Terry.
Yes.
So one thought was, so we didn't, you wanted to go two weeks, it was on the council meeting rather than a workshop.
Hmm.
Um, can we just move it to make the workshop a council meeting? That gives us one week.
Hmm, separation between the council member and the mayor, the ninth to the sixteenth, is that what you were thinking?
No, bringing the, so instead of going two weeks from now, which you couldn't make, do it one week from now, which would have been a workshop, but we could change it to an actual council meeting. Which will give us one week and then we'll be able to do it.
I will not be in Africa next week. So I'll be available.
So, okay, so if I get this right, you're talking the nineteenth?
Yeah, next.
I'm gonna give people. Four days, one, two, three, four, five, five days to apply.
Yeah, it'd be quick. And to be honest, um, I personally don't think, you know, the next council member has to be at that retreat, but I understand that some people do. But I do have the concern, if you leave it open for three weeks, for example, that's. It's a headache for a lot of people because there's going to be all the politicking and trying to line this up and it's, it's uh pretty exhausting.
Hmm.
Uh, I think five days would be sufficient. If, I mean, if they're interested in running for mayor, they'd. Put their stuff together pretty quick.
Yeah.
City clerk, yes.
So the recommendation then would be we could start advertising tomorrow for the mayor. We could take applications up until five o'clock. On Monday, the eighteenth.
Hmm.
And then on the nineteenth, you guys would hold open interviews.
Yeah.
For those applicants and choose, you could choose that night and then the mayor could get oaths in that night. And then on the twentieth, if it happens to be a current council member. Then on the twentieth, we could advertise for the vacancy of council member if there is one and you would just have to guide us on how long you want to keep those applications. Out for.
Until the ninth.
Oh, because we're waiting for Councilmember Baldwin.
The eighth.
Yeah.
The application would stay open until Monday, the eighth of April, and then the interview process would happen on the ninth of April, should. We lose a council member.
Correct.
But if we don't lose a council member, then that will all be taken care of next week.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, I I think I'd be okay if we just uh uh changed the rules at for the workshop to allow public testimony. I think the, my big concern with with this is that if the public wants to talk, I would like to hear the public talk about this, right? So, um. Pardon me?
The ninth, he talked about the ninth.
It would be, yeah, it would be the nineteenth, which we could, could we suspend the rule so we allow the public?
If you're doing action, we automatically have public commenting, even if it's a workshop. So, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Sounds like option four is what was just described.
Good option.
Uh.
Make a motion to up. To move forward. Then.
We'll call it option four.
Option four, the nineteenth for. Mayor candidacy and the ninth of April for open council if needed. Second.
Any other discussion? Are we good? Councilmember McLeimans.
I think we should make sure we bring chocolate and jerky to the retreat for staff.
Yeah.
Roses, too.
Roses.
All right, uh, with that, all in, oh, sorry, go ahead. Okay, all in favor of going for what's described as option four, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Nay.
Clerk.
May we have a suggestion of tabling the presentations to another meeting, perhaps?
Hmm.
Uh, I'm sorry, I I got lost.
There's like more going.
We've got like, we've got three presentations, we could table those for another meeting.
Yeah, we could do that. Um, is there a motion? All make the motion. Is there a second?
Second, to table them?
Yeah.
Um, if, before we table them, is there somebody here who is going to uh uh. Talk or testify about one of these that wants to do that now that they couldn't do it in the future?
Uh, I think it was uh, it was Harris, uh, Shanaman and myself were kind of presenting those. I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we've knocked that one.
Option, okay, my, we're still.
We have an all in favor?
It's all in favor, thank you. All in favor? Of tabling, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, bring that. All right, no public hearing. Citizen comments. And this is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Please, sir.
Russell, it's my name. I've been in the city uh for around fifty-five years, admin seventy-five fifteen, running the first avenue east. And uh, one picture is worth a thousand words. Can I give you some pictures?
Yes.
This is about a violation.
Oh, you don't.
Is that?
Please give it to the clerk and then she'll pass it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Share with Kelly and you share with them.
Thanks.
It's a big tree.
Any questions? Notice the tree is cut off. According to statute in Cedar and Vine Lake, it's a dead tree. You have to have a permit. To cut down a tree or take and cut it off. So I have a violation there. You see the code? Notice the date, December twelfth. Twenty twenty-three. There are pictures of the tree in two thousand twenty-three and a half years ago.
Which tree?
Yeah, which?
Excuse me, which which tree is it?
The cedar tree is open right. You can just see it over the band. That's a city employee.
Yes. Okay.
Hundred-year-old cedar tree. It's a school lawn, according to law, you're jargon, but they're split trees. You have one right outside here, cedar tree, kind of known as one. Have you seen it?
No, I'm not seeing it.
Yes.
Is it the tree next to this vehicle?
I can show you if you want. That's, you know, the violation.
Can you show me?
Yeah, he, approach the.
Approach the.
He would like to.
For five, this one here, right there, see it cut down?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, that was December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, city employee. And that picture there is from an insurance company in December two thousand twenty. And section nine says if it's a natural disaster or something like that, Mother Nature took it down. We saved the tree by cutting it. You can see on the two tops on one of the houses there, buildings. But now I have a violation. I uh went down here, I went to the, I went, called Mr. Vodapitch at four oh five on December, or March fourth. Uh, told him that uh we had to take this care of it and to call me or we'd go to the city council. So here we are. So I'd like that violation uh vacated and I also would like to know who. The person was and the chain of command who gave him the go-ahead. And that's, do I get it here? Do I have to go through public records, freedom of information? Which will be a mess, but I want to do it.
Great question. I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Sullivan to help us through that.
So I I I cannot speak to who the, who submitted the request for action because I don't have it on the top of my head. Um, I do know that uh I reached out to uh Brandy Lamperson, who sent the letter and had her reach out to uh Mr. Rudolph. Uh, when we receive requests for actions, we don't know what has transpired on a piece of property over time. Um, and I know Brandy had reached out to Mr. Rudolph, I think. The next day and had a very good conversation with him and agreed that if it had been damaged because of lightning strike or nature, that the notice of violation would be waived. Um, we've received the documentation now that it was from a natural disaster, so the violation is closed and waived as far as we're concerned.
You're mistaken. She called me that same day.
Oh, I apologize, the same day. All right, I thought I thought it was the next day that. Okay.
Normally, fifty-five years in this city, I've learned that you keep a record of everything the city has done, period, whether it's sewers, police, whatever it is, you have to have a record. And this time I didn't take a record because, oh, God, it was a disaster. But law hold, three and a half years later, you get a violation.
So as I, you know, as I said, we don't know what transpires on the property. We're not watching properties all the time.
Show him the picture there.
No, no, I, though I have looked at the pictures and we definitely have confirmed that the violation is closed. Um, we can send a letter, verify that to you, Mr. Rudolph, but yeah, I think, I said, Brandy reached out that same day, wasn't able to talk to her. I, that's why I was meeting her the next day. Yeah, she was really nice, reached out, got all the information and as soon as we received the information that it was due to a natural disaster, the violation's closed. Um. And that's, that's it is. No, no fines were issued. Um. Yeah, so notice of violation simply says you have thirty days to resolve the violation.
We need to get him some documentation to say that.
We will gladly, I will.
No issue.
I will get with Brandy tomorrow to get the letter of compliance out.
Here. And it goes to you, like, cut it down. It's a violation, called the municipal. Now, one other time, number of years ago, I put in a request, cut down some trees. The ninth.
Yeah.
My trees.
Clerk, can you speak into the mic? So, sorry. Thank you.
Hundred years old. Guess what? Ten of them took out three houses, two houses in the garage and a truck after the city denied that permit. So what's gonna happen now if I put in, or anyone puts in request for a permit? And the tree goes on to somebody's property and damages it, is the city responsible?
So I I, what I could speak to is generally, we will get, definitely get the letter out. Trees don't become regulated until they hit six inches in diameter, uh, which is measured fifty-four inches above the ground. So no, if you planted a tree tomorrow and in two years, it could.
Flat super trees are a hundred feet tall now.
It's it's not the height, it's it's the diameter.
Like this.
Um, and so that's when it becomes a regulated tree. Um, the second part is we do have provisions on our code. Um, I don't know what happened to the permit ten years ago, but we have specific provisions on our code that if an arbiter says the tree is a hazard to either a property, it's a high or an extreme hazard to. Property and there's actual forms that they fill out that identify these things, then it can be removed without any permit. We just ask that you give us the arbors report. So things like this type of miscommunication does not happen. So there is a process to completely, to completely take care of hazard trees or trees that are potentially a hazard on your property. So. Um, that provision was added to the code a couple of years ago, so I can't speak to what happened.
The code's going for nail and tree, put a rope on it.
We put that in the provision, there is a provision that says you can't spike trees. Um, one way of killing a tree is to drive a bunch of penny nails in at the base. Uh, and then claim the tree died, um, because it was poisoned. Pen, pen, penny nails poison trees. That's why that is in the code.
Alnord Park, Paul Park, each tree down there has a little nail in it with the number on it.
Correct. What, what, we would never go after anybody for a single nail. It is, as I said, spiking trees with multiple pennies.
Okay, anyway, I just want to get it over with, done with, and Mr. Vodapitch did not return my call, so we've had a history of that. So anyway, I consider it done. And you don't have to worry about it.
Right, can Mr. Rudolph, you'd like to come to our offices to talk about any other tree on your properties?
Five years of stuff that's went on all, from every department. So get ahold of me and I'll give you the videos, emails, whatever it is. I mean, some sewers, couldn't even hook up the sewer in my own land. Goodbye.
Thank you. It sounds like if you want to give your information to Mr. Sullivan, it sounds like he could probably take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Councilmember, I'm past councilmember Dan Decker, two four and seventy street, East Vine Lake, Washington. I just wanted to say, tonight was an interesting fiasco. I mean, even beyond that. One council member, she uh said I or me over a hundred and sixty-seven times. Good job. Other council member said something about people are concerned about the way. The election would be if it was tonight and it needs to be going out to the people. I would like to have a name, list and address of all of those people that are concerned. This is an RCW forty-two fifty-six request and I'm directing it to Dan Roach. This is an RCW forty-two fifty-six request and I'm directing it, directing at Dan Roach, Councilmember Roach. And I think that tonight was a really interesting adventure in lack of response and correctness in a council meeting. I appreciate five of the people. The other two, I'm really concerned about because they demonstrated that they were here because they were representing, I believe, a church interest. I said, a church interest, not an interest of the people. And that is a thought that needs to be looked at strongly. And I'm very unhappy about what's happened tonight. And council, remember one very, very specific, important thing. The ninety-day period started on the fifth of this month, not today. And we have ninety days to get a mayor in office or the county will appoint someone whether you like it or not. And thank you very much, council. Remember, I just requested an RCW forty-two fifty-six from Dan Roach. And those people that he mentioned were concerned about the way the process is going. And if he doesn't have those people, then I guess he just lied to us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will now start those that are virtual. Uh, you have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. I see a hand up for Michelle DePorter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Michelle DePorter and I live on two hundred and tenth Avenue East in Bonnie Lake. I want to commend the council for not rushing and opening the mayoral field to outside applicants. Considering the city council lost two extremely qualified council members in the last election, who also have a wealth of experience, should they want to apply, and the talent pool in our city is deep. The position of mayor protest exists for a reason and situations like this would be that reason. That being said, I will express my sincere concern that Mr. Carter is in a position to be appointed to be the mayor of this city when he carries with him a well-documented troubling history. The articles referenced in the council's discussion as a smear campaign did include Mr. Carter and he was interviewed for the article as he stated. All of the appropriate disciplinary notes and reports from his time at Bonnie Lake are a matter of public record and they're freely available online. Mr. Carter resigned from the Bonnie Lake Police Department in two thousand thirteen, but it's because he was faced with being terminated for conduct unbecoming and for lying to his superiors. And he was subsequently added to the Pierce County Prosecutor's Brady List, which identifies law enforcement officers who have, among other problems, credibility issues. He's also been in significant trouble in his current job at Pacific, um, where he was disciplined for negligently not working on cases of crimes against children and even allowing the statute of limitations to expire on some of them, so suspects were allowed to go free without consequence. Mr. Carter, who is a career law enforcement officer, falls back time and again on blaming his superiors for his own shortcomings, saying that in decades in law enforcement, for example, he was never trained on how to handle cases and that that's why he was caught with a backlog of at least thirty sex abuse cases, many of them involving children. The idea that Mr. Carter and other currently seated council members tonight are willing to overlook all of the public records and all of the reports and a consistent, multi-year history of lies and dereliction and suggests that apparently some law enforcement officers are worthy of respect, but the ones who disciplined Mr. Carter are problematic or are liberal plants that multiple supervisors over multiple years in multiple cities found reasons to discipline him out of retaliation because they didn't like him. That is not only unreasonable, but it makes a significant statement about how gullible some members of this council think their constituents are. Mr. Carter may have shared his experience, his appearance in that article and discussion of his unfortunate history with like-minded, like-minded council candidates in the reelection year, but he's done a remarkable job of keeping it hidden from citizens. I have followed his time as a council member very closely and I have never once seen him publicly address any of the concerns and I have met very few people with knowledge of the events. It's clear to me that almost no one saw that article in a small online publication. His opponent in that election didn't openly campaign, didn't distribute literature, didn't make any appearances and didn't place campaign signs. Mr. Carter basically ran unopposed, which speaks to the council's discussion of the votes he received. I believe the haste being driven today by a certain cohort of the council was an attempt to force the hand and make the appointment before more citizens might be exposed to this information. If some council members were not previously aware, they now will have this time to further research so they can be held accountable for their individual votes, should they vote to appoint Deputy Mayor Carter, knowing the truth about his character, which frankly should immediately disqualify Mr. Carter from leading our city. Moving forward, filling the subsequently opened council seat, should a council member be appointed mayor, I would like to ask the council to please consider the recent elections that were held and consider the desires of their constituents and residents of Bonnie Lake. My concern in particular is knowing that at least one candidate who lost their race is affiliated outside the city council with at least three current council members. And should Bonnie Lake citizens be allowed and encouraged to submit their applications with an eye toward wanting to participate in municipal government, all candidates should be insured equal and fair consideration. The city, the citizens and all possible applicants deserve full transparency in all of these proceedings. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Got handled.
I'm finishing up comments, right? Uh, okay, I don't see anyone else. For the good of the order, uh, the city will now disable all video and microphone for those attending virtually. And Councilmember McLeimans, did you have something?
Yeah, I would respectfully ask for permission to address the accusation that um I tried to nominate you in order to keep your past record um a secret. Um, that was not my intention at all. And I would just like, uh, Ms. DePorter to understand that, that I was just trying to move with haste because I think there's an inevitable outcome and I was just trying to conserve energy and time on everybody's part because I believe that's the inevitable outcome. So um, rest assured, there wasn't an underlying um, any form of malfeasance there or uh, an agenda other than just getting stuff done. Thank you.
Okay, um, go to uh committee reports, uh, finance committee. I do that one. The finance committee met today at five o'clock upstairs. Uh, we approved our minutes. We had a personnel update. Uh, we had a discussion about AB twenty-four twenty-three, resolution thirty-two oh one. Uh, finance discussion in regards to the inter-local agreement with Pierce County for opioid abatement settlement funds. Essentially, there's two settlements for about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're looking to join with uh Pierce County and other cities uh, to disperse those funds in a positive way to help fight opioid. Uh, and then we had AB twenty-four twenty-four, resolution thirty-two oh two, which is the Johnson and Johnson opioid settlement agreement. Uh, that is two payments of seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, and basically it would be, we'd be agreeing to it. So uh, the first one will be coming to, I'm trying to remember what my notes here say. Uh, I think in a couple of weeks it goes to uh finance committee agenda items. So we'll talk about that later. Uh, the other one's talking about getting money and so I think that went on to the consent agenda in a couple of weeks. Uh, there was a recreation program discussion as well. Uh, and there, I think as we mentioned the last time, there was positive movement in that the school district will discuss a potential ILA uh, with the rec program in the city uh at their work, I guess, workshop tomorrow. And then we have a very brief discussion on uh vouchers. And that brings up uh Community Development Committee, please. Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a discussion, uh, single item was the comprehensive plan update process that uh the council is probably aware that we're working on a new comprehensive plan, the city is. So there will be coming forward, of course, the public and planning agency does a lot of pre-work on that. We'll see pieces of it come through the uh Community Development Committee and then to the council workshop undoubtedly. So it's going to be a plan where, you know, dig into the details of that and get a lot of pre-questions answered with staff or what have you, if you like. If you want to dig into those, that's a huge gigantic plan and it won't come forward in just a three thousand page, you know, essay. It's going to be multiple pieces with any luck. So that's what we'll be moving forward with in the future, but that's, you know, many, long process.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Public Safety Committee, please. Councilmember Baldwin.
The Public Safety Committee met this, not this morning, at three thirty today. Our next meeting will be April ninth at three thirty on the second floor. Public is welcome. Um, we had a report from East Pierce. Um, Station one eleven, the roof is on. They are working on the interior currently. Also, Proposition one is on the ballot in April for a special election um to do a lid lift on their fire levy. Um, Bonnie Lake will benefit that it will add an additional aid unit. Um, the Bonnie Lake PD officers, many of them were at Trooper Gads Memorial Service um up in Everett. We have two entry-level officers um that started March first. They are currently uh waiting for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy spots, uh, which could take up to six months. Uh, we have two laterals coming in. Um, and it sounds like the third will have the chief's interview. I, I hope I said that right. Anyway, uh, the prosecutor's office um had a report. Um, and then also the emergency management monthly report came out. Um, they, their comprehensive emergency plan uh came back from the state with positive feedback. We actually haven't had that updated since uh two thousand. So um, great that we have that going on. Um, we also went over the Allen York Park operational plan. Um, there was a, there was a lot there. Um, so we are going to have a three off-duty officers that are going to be at the park. Um, and that's going to be added and canceled based on weather. Um, we have one that's going to be at the boat launch parking for enforcement, um, and also the gate entry for the beach. Um, there's talks about thinning out vegetation, um, and things like that, uh, keeping the lighting on uh twenty-four seven. We were just talking about ways to just keep that area as safe as possible. Um, also for uh future kind of thoughts on um Old City Hall site, that's going to, that is projected to be demolished um and cleared out uh this coming fall. Um, and I feel like that's everything.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we now have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Alright, uh, discussion? Oh, okay. All those in favor of uh passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Uh, seeing no committee issues, that's it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It's fine.
That was something I was trying to say.
That's a treat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just kind of interested in.